We'll call to order the City of Douglasville's regular city council meeting for tonight, which is Monday, the 17th of October, 2022. Our invocation will be done by Reverend Brian Berryhill of Heritage Baptist Church, and then our pledge allegiance will be led by the mayor pro tem. Mayor Pro Tem Terry Miller, please stand for the invocation.
Dear Lord and Heavenly Father, we come to you again, thanking you, Lord, for this beautiful day that we've had today. Thanking you, Lord, that we have a servant of God, Lord, that we can call on and we can bring all our petitions before you. I want to ask you to be in the midst of this meeting, lead, guide, and direct in each and everything that's done, the agenda here tonight. And, Lord, as we come into this fall season, I pray you a hedge of protection around our community and this city. And, Lord, help us, Lord, to love one another the way we should and ultimately love you. And we ask all this, in Jesus' name we humbly pray. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and Pastor Berryhill. We appreciate the invocation. We apologize for starting a little late. We did have a long committee meeting, so for those who expects us to start at 6 o'clock, we started a little bit beyond after our time. We apologize for that. We do have a presentation. It's a proclamation to Ms. Teresa Smith, the executive director of ShareHouse, declaring the month of October 2022 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Douglasville. I will read the proclamation, then I'll give the instructions for our meeting, and we will move expeditiously through the agenda. Office of the Mayor, proclamation, whereas ShareHouse's responsibility is to prevent, educate, and to respond to domestic violence in our homes, neighborhoods, communities, and nation; and whereas ShareHouse recognizes the impact domestic violence has on the victim and has selected awareness, plus action brings hope, as the theme of 2022. Whereas domestic violence is an American result and abuse in our homes, which threatens our individual, community, and national sense of safety and security; and each woman, child, and man in America has the right to live free from violence in his or her home, neighborhood, and community; and whereas important partnerships have been formed in Douglasville among public safety, juvenile justice agencies, allied professionals, victim services, and private sector to ensure that clients are treated with dignity and respect with which they deserve; and whereas law enforcement, prosecutors, judges, correctional professionals, victim service providers, and the community as a whole play a critical role in enhancing the safety of domestic violence victims and the safety of those around them; and whereas among the key components of domestic violence prevention and awareness in Douglasville and Douglas County is ShareHouse, which provides community services to victims of domestic violence to enhance victim's safety and security; and whereas ShareHouse sponsors various services which assist victims of domestic violence, including 24-hour crisis services, emergency shelter, legal services, support services, and temporary protective orders, in which they seek to reduce future domestic violence through greater public awareness. Now, therefore, I hereby, resolved by the Douglasville Mayor and members of the Douglasville City Council, hereby declare that October 2022 is declared as to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Douglasville. Be it further resolved by the mayor and members of the city council that we recognize domestic violence is a critical issue in America, which requires a collaborative response from individual citizens and communities in order to minimize and sensitively respond to domestic violence crimes and in order to ensure supportive services are available for victims. Be it further resolved that by the mayor and members of the city council that ShareHouse is commended for its services to the Douglasville, Douglas County communities so proclaimed -- that's a lot of reading -- this day, October 17, 2022. Let's give Ms. Smith a hand. And Ms. Teresa, you can have words and say whatever you would like to say, and then we'll come around and take a photo with you and present the proclamation.
Okay. On behalf of ShareHouse, Mayor Robinson and the council, we appreciate you taking this opportunity to recognize October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. As we know, it is a big issue, unfortunately, in our communities, and we would like to invite the citizens of Douglasville to attend our annual candlelight vigil that's being held at Heritage Baptist Church on October 20 at 7:00 PM, and all citizens are invited. And thank you again for our support.
Thank you, Ms. Teresa. We'll come around and present the proclamation to you. One, two, three. All right. Thank you. We appreciate your patience. I will go through protocol for the meeting, and then we'll get into the meat of our meeting. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Douglasville's regular voting meeting. My name's Rochelle Robinson. I'm mayor of the City of Douglasville. This is a city council meeting of agenda items where official action will be taken tonight on the items that were discussed during the legislative work session on this previous Thursday. If the business you're here for is not listed as an agenda item, there will be ample time under the items, comments and citizens, comments from citizens and delegates section for you to discuss your business. I ask that you please keep your comments and presentations on a professional level, dealing with the facts that are important for this governing body to make our decisions. We will not accept comments that are considered by the chair to be of a personal attack on any individual or group of individuals. You will receive a warning from the chair, and if you deviate from this requirement, a second deviation will result in requesting that you will not continue to speak in the microphone. Only one person speaking at a time. Please do not applaud or react to the speaker from the audience, cheer, or carry on a conversation while you're at the microphone, the podium. I'll remind you that we're only required to accept public comments on zoning matters, and if you have a cellphone or electronic device, we ask that you would please with those in silent mode or turn those off until after the meeting so they will not be disruptive. The agenda items will be handled in the following manner. The committee chairperson will read the agenda item, and then that person representing that agenda item or applicant will make his or her presentation. We ask that you please would just present the information. If you have new information, you don't have to go over the entire presentation again unless council members ask for additional information. Myself and council members will possibly ask clarifying questions, and after that, the committee chairperson will ask for comments or statements from the audience. There's a maximum of 20 minutes for those in favor and 20 minutes for those in opposition of those items that are deemed to have a public hearing. Prior to approaching the podium, please fill out a card that's on the table, the desk out there. We ask that you would fill that out. It will state, gives your name and address for the record, and we ask that you would please give that to Ms. Acker, the city clerk, to my right, and she will put that in the official documents. This is not a question or answer or debate format. We're just here to hear the information, deliberate, and make our decisions, and tonight we will be voting. If you have any information that requires, that needs to be printed or submitted to us, we ask that you would give that to the city clerk as well. She will make copies and disseminate that information to us. So those are the rules for the meeting, and we will follow the agenda. You can either follow on the screen, or if you would like to have a paper agenda for yourself, you can certainly get one of those out on the desk. Now I will move on with the agenda as presented, and we'll move to item number five, which is the approval of the agenda. I open the floor for a motion to adopt the adoption of the regular meeting agenda for October 17, 2022.
So moved.
Thank you so much. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved in second. I think it was initially given by Councilman Adams and seconded by Councilman Estes to adopt the regular meeting agenda for October 17, 2022. Have any questions or comments from council? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The agenda is adopted for tonight unanimously. So we'll move on to the minutes for approval. Open the floor for a motion to approve the minutes of September 26, which was a special workshop and executive session, and special work session, executive session; September 29, 2022, which was a legislative work session and an executive session; and lastly, October 3, 2022, which was a regular meeting. So open the floor for a motion to approve item 22-364, which is inclusive of all of these minutes.
So moved.
Thank you so much, Councilman Adams. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. It's been properly moved in second to approve item 22-364. Do we have any comments, questions from the council? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 22-364 is unanimously approved. We'll move on then to the consent agenda. I will open the floor for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. It's been properly moved in second, moved from Councilman Estes and second by council member Davis to approve the consent agenda as presented. Do we see any corrections or concerns with the consent agenda from council? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The consent agenda is unanimously approved. We are on item number eight, which is Economic Development Committee, and that's chaired by Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Economic Development Committee at this time.
Thank you, sir. Finance Committee chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight under finance.
Thank you, sir. Housing Committee Affairs, Housing and Community Affairs Committee chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have no business tonight.
Thank you so much, Dr. Burdanley.
You're welcome.
Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
No business tonight, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Councilman Davis. Personnel and Organization Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item tonight.
Yes, sir.
To adopt a resolutions subscribing to certain ethical principles in government and partial fulfillment of the requirements for recertification to the Georgia Municipal Association City of Ethics Program and as a companion to the existing ethics and government provisions of the Douglasville Charter and City Code. And Ms. Jordan will handle that tonight.
Thank you, Councilman Watts. Good evening, mayor and council. As we discussed on Thursday night, this is a resolution to re-adopt and reconfirm our commitment to be a city of ethics. This resolution is required for the application to be considered for renewal for another four years for the Georgia Municipal Association's City of Ethics Program. And again, those items that we are reaffirming is to serve others, not ourselves, use resources with efficiency and economy, treat all people fairly, use the power of our position for the well-being of our constituents, and create an environment of honesty, openness, and integrity.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? I'm assuming y'all discussed this Thursday night. Nobody has any questions or comment? Yes, Madam Mayor.
Only thing I want to say is we have been a city of ethics previously, and we like to keep the standard high, and that's why we are applying again to make certain that we do adhere to these requirements and try to present ourselves in an open format and transparency to the citizens. So it's an honor to be part of the city of ethics. It isn't easy, and all cities in the state of Georgia are not members, so, but we like to do that.
Well, I think it shows our commitment to, our commitment to our citizens, the folks that put us here to operate in the daylight and do things the right way. So thank you, Madam Mayor, for that. Any other questions or comments? I'd like to make a motion to approve item 22-372.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
There.
Thank you so much, Councilman Adams. It's been properly moved in second by the chair, moved in second by Councilmember Adams to approve item 22-372. Do we have any additional comments or questions from council? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 22-372 is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all we had tonight under Personnel and Organization.
Thank you, sir. On our way to be a city of ethics again. I'll move on then to item number 13, which is the Committee for Planning and Development Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
Planning and Development Committee has three items tonight.
Yes, sir.
We'll start with item A. Hold a public hearing and consider a request for change in zoning from G.C., General Commercial District to L.I., Light Industrial District for 16.7 acres, located 1320 Blair's Bridge Road, landlot 617, District 18, Section 2, Parcel 3, Parcel ID Number 06171820003. Application by Persica Capital LLC, care of Andrew Behinger. Ms. Shayla Reed is going to help us with that item. Thank you, Ms. Reed.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. Shayla Reed, 6701 Church Street, Community Development Director. In regards to this item, it remains as discussed on Thursday. They're requesting to have a commercial zoning that goes into Enlightened Industrial. Currently, it does not have the future land use, but we did mention on Thursday that this area has transitioned into industrial. So staff, as well as the planning commission, supports this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. The instructions say that we hold a public hearing, and so at this time, if there are no questions or comments of council or Madam Mayor for Ms. Reed, this item, she has provided no other information. If there's not any other, then we will go through the public hearing process, even though we did do that on Thursday. If there's anyone here that would like to come, whether it be the applicant to provide new information, or anyone that would like to speak on behalf or against the item, please come forward. Does the applicant have new information?
Good evening, Joe Fowler, Post Office, Box 49, Douglasville. Hope you're doing well. No additional information, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fowler. I'll open the floor then to see if there's anyone here that would like to speak either for or against the application, as we have heard it on Thursday night and held our public hearing. No one here to do that? We will close that portion of the public hearing. And again, I'll ask, Madam Mayor and council, are there any questions that you all may have prior to a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Coach Watts.
Since I wasn't here Thursday night, I just wanted to, I just wanted to ask about one of the, number 14, on page nine, you know, specifically says that the proposed development is not compatible with a comprehensive plan at this time, but that in the future land use of that area, that there would be some type of amendment. That's pretty common, that it's handled that way?
Yes, sir. A comprehensive plan is updated every five years, so sometimes trends will take place over those five years, and so this particular area has had a trend of requests for industrial zonings in that area. So staff is noting that we'll correct that in your upcoming comprehensive plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Others? All righty. Seeing none then. Ms. Reed, if you don't have anything else, then I will make a motion that we approve item A, 22-351.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved in second, moved by the chair, Councilman Adams, and second by Councilmember Estes to approve item 22-351. Do we have any additional comments or questions from council outside of what Councilman Watts asked? Yes, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Madam Mayor, one last thing. We did discuss landscaping on the, along the perimeter on the interstate. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. They have landscaping requirements.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that was still, okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. That's all, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir. Make sure the aesthetics are correct. Any other comments or questions from council members? Not seen? Oh, yes, sir.
Madam Mayor, I would assume that that would be handled in the development plan when that comes before us?
That is correct.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. Any other concerns? Not seeing any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 22-351 is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're going to item B.
You're welcome.
Hold a public hearing and consider a request for a plat approval for the purpose of dedicating additional right-of-way of North River Road to incorporate a cul-de-sac for Riverside West Phase 2. Track C, 171.020 acres at 1550, 1701, 1750, and 1800, North River Road, Land Lot 173, District 1, Section 5, Parcels 12, 14, 15, and 16. Application by Urban Engineers Incorporated, care of John Newman. Ms. Reed?
Yes, sir. As discussed on Thursday, this is a revision to a previously adopted final plat. Previously, the road ended on North River Road, and now they've installed a cul-de-sac or allow for a roundabout area. They're now asking for it to be added to allow for the right-of-way to be placed and adopted.
Ms. Reed, is this the last piece of property there that would be then located at the end of the cul-de-sac?
Yes, sir.
So there is a need now for emergency vehicles to come to the end of the street, turn around, and so that's the reason for us taking this right-of-way?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. Questions? Comments? Okay. Is there any other new information that the applicant would like to give us? New information or any statement that would need to be made? Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone here that would speak either for or against the application in question? All righty. Seeing none then. Ms. Reed, if that's all you have, we will close that public hearing and make a motion that we approve item 22-365.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I had a dueling second. Did you get it, city clerk? All right. It's been properly moved in second to approve item 22-365. Do we have any additional comments or questions as relates to this item? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving item 22-365, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Item B is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our final item tonight, item C, Consider a Request for Development Plan Approval for the Hazel Park Senior Living Development on 11.41 acres, Dury Lee Lane and Land Lots 52 and 53, District 1, Section 2, Parcel ID 00530150048. Plans dated January 26, 2022. Application by TB Development, TBG Development Services Incorporated. Mr. Thompson?
Marcus Thompson, City Engineer, 6701 Church Street. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council.
Good evening.
I just want to basically confirm a couple of things that were discussed last Thursday, at last Thursday's council meeting. I uploaded the ordinance allowing rezoning for this development to the agenda tonight, and just want to confirm that there were no conditions during that rezoning case, which was enacted July 20, 2020. And lastly, I just wanted to confirm the site location. So the development will be located opposite side of the Douglas County Family and Child Services, if you guys are familiar with that. That's behind, like you're going towards Chick-fil-A.
So that would be the public-purpose corporation building that the city owns? This would be on the opposite side of Dury Lee Lane as you go south toward the multimodal county?
Yes, sir.
Multimodal project, correct?
Yes, sir.
So it would be on the left, next to the mini warehouses?
Yes, sir. It's right behind American Freight Furniture and Matrimony.
Yes, sir. Okay. Okay. That's what we anticipated. Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments? Is that all, Mr. Thompson?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for that clarification. Does, Madam Mayor, any question or comment?
No, sir.
To the council? So this is a development plan for a previously zoned property, and we had no conditions on that plan that had to be adhered to in their development plan, other than, of course, to abide by the UDO, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And all of that has been, all of that is correct according to our UDO and is within the spec of what we require?
Yes, sir.
Okay. No questions or comments? Okay. Make a motion that we approve item 22-361.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve 22-361. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Davis. It's been properly moved in second to approve item 22-361. Do we have any additional comments or questions as relates to this item? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 22-361 is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That completes our business under planning and development tonight.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to staff, Ms. Reed, and Mr. Thompson. We'll move on then to item number 14, which is Public Improvement and Beautification Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business this evening for public improvement and beautification.
Thank you, ma'am. I will move on to item 15, Public Relations Committee, chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The PR committee has no business this evening.
Thank you, sir. Public Safety Committee chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
No business tonight, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, sir. Recreation, Culture, and Tourism Committee chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight in Recreation, Culture, and Tourism.
Thank you so much, sir. Let's see. So I had a question for later. Technology Committee chaired by Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business at this time under the Technology Committee.
Thank you, sir. Transportation Committee chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight under Transportation.
Very good.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have any other business to come before council from the elected officials?
Madam Mayor, just wanted to make sure that, and Councilwoman Miller may be able to tell us better than I about our plan for Saturday.
That was gonna be one of my questions. Yes, sir.
So if I can put her on the spot, please, as to times and dates.
You're the Chili Cook-Off captain.
I appreciate that, because as soon as you said that, I said, ooh, I need to talk to these guys. All right. I was pulling up my notes for us right quick. So we all owe Ms. Sandra Adams a big thank you, because she has graciously volunteered to decorate for us. Decorating and setup starts at 4:00. If you guys can come out and help, I'm sure she would appreciate it. The CAC does provide that tent for us, and one of the tables, I believe Sandra's gonna bring another table. I am making a Sam's Run on Wednesday to get our Fritos, Oyster crackers, cheese, sour cream, and Halloween candy. So if you guys can think of, oh, and hot sauce. So if you guys can think of anything else that we may need, please let me know before I go on Wednesday. And then also, I believe Jason Post and his team are working on a banner for us, and Ms. Kristen had asked me, so, sorry, I know, like I really should have written this sound bars a little better, but, God, I hope y'all love me. I know that the Adams, their decorations were, was it Witch's Brew? Okay. And so she's gonna bring all of her spooky spiders and witches brew type stuff, and we had talked about our team name, I believe, and I don't even know at this point if it really matters, but I think it's just gonna say Team Douglasville. But if you ask Howard or anyone else, they might tell you that it is Defending Champions?
The Defending Champs, yes.
Defending Champions.
Yes. Because I believe we've all won at one point or another, so that should count. But we do need to let Kristen know our booth name, if we're okay with Team Douglasville or Defending Champions. A brief description of the chili, which I believe, if I'm not mistaken, it is traditional chili, and that's all we're gonna have.
So we're gonna say Defending Champions, 'cause I know I've won before for taste, and we all have won.
All right, I like it. Okay, we'll just have to scare off the competition.
Excuse me, Councilman Miller.
Yes.
Councilman Davis has suggested that we name it Hootat Chili.
Uh-uh.
We're not, we're not doing it.
No.
I wanna be, I wanna be toe-dod, definitely.
We're gonna be toe-dod.
I agree with you.
Bring the cats in.
Yep, yep.
Cats, the cats, the cats.
Yeah, no. I'm sorry, sir, none of that, but I look forward to seeing you guys there, and if y'all have any questions, please let me know.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. We appreciate you coming up with the idea, Councilmember Miller, in for us to be a team at the Chili Cook-Off. I think it's great. It shows the community that we, as elected a body and leader since the community, work together. So that's really exciting. So that was the one thing I had. I was going to ask, I think Mr. Thompson is still here, status on a couple of transportation concerns that citizens have brought to me. The one is Church Street, and I know, I don't know if WSA is doing that or we're doing that. I did text Mr. Gregg.
WSA.
WSA, so we need to get a status report from them about the timeframe and the whole, 'cause I think it's from Fairburn Road all the way to Rose Avenue. Okay, so, and they're not blocking off the street. They did have it blocked off for a section, a time, and then they opened it back up, but it isn't completed. It's still in renovation status. So I'll find out from WSA. The other one was just a status or the timeframe for the parking count for Town Green Amphitheater, if we have that coming up.
They have it. They're gonna submit it.
If you're gonna submit it another time, that's fine. I just wish someone asked me that again.
No, ma'am. Ms. Chelsea Jackson, they have it. She's gonna present it, I think, at the next round of meetings when they do their presentation on Town Green.
Okay, very good, very good. I think that's the only two I had, parking Chili Cook-Off. And an email that I sent to the council to withdraw my request for adjustments for the car allowance, that wouldn't be taking place until two thousand twenty-four, but I'm just withdrawing your request. And so I think that's it for me. Anything else, elected officials? Okay, thank you all so much. We'll move on then to updates from city staff. Our city attorney, Mr. Joel Dotson.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Staff attorney, Ms. Miranda Jordan?
No business.
Thank you. Is that, who's that over there? Is that Marine? Thank you from the police department. Our city manager, Ms. Marsha Hampton.
I don't have any business, Madam Mayor, but I will call up the Assistant City Manager. I think she has a follow-up report for you all.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Chelsea Jackson, six-six-nine-five Church Street. If you all recall, about two weeks ago, I presented to you all regarding the potential hotel project. Prior to that, we did have the developer on, so that was about a month ago. The developer came to speak with you all as well. We do have the developer here, 'cause you know, we know you all had some follow-up questions and concerns, so I'll call Mr. Chris Pumphrey up to introduce the developer, and after him, she will come up to speak. And this is the hotel project off of Fairburn Road and I twenty, when we were discussing the potential Town Place Suites or the Wood Spring Suites, I believe.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Chris Pumphrey, Elevate Douglas Economic Partnership, eighty-five twelve Bowden Street. Yes, we are here to present back the developer of the project behind Dunkin' Donuts and Pizza Hut on Fairburn Road, which originally was presented to you all as a wood spring, which we talked about in the last meeting, was a proposal to come back with a Town Place Suites and separate facility for restaurant and event space on that site. So I have with me Dr. Kavita Pirohit, and I probably said it wrong, but I apologize, but I'm sure you'll correct it. So I'll ask her to come up to talk about our project and answer any questions that you all may have, unless you have any questions of me at this point in time.
Not particularly you, Mr. Pumphrey, but I did see some confused looks. I know we said before, from the council perspective for staff, if we could, I don't know how we got to presenting under other business, or we were supposed to go back through committees.
We can go back to committees. I think Mr. Pumphrey was looking for an answer fairly quickly. I think that's why he's back before you all, but if you want to do that at another time, we had the executive session, that's why we didn't have any room for it, so it's...
I'm just trying to feel the will of the council. You're here now, we can go ahead, but I know that was some of the issues that we talked about before, is to, you know, put on the agenda so that people can come in and have a conversation and not just present under other business, but we'll take it, yeah.
Well, I'll allow Kavita to come up and talk about our project and explain it in a way that I probably didn't explain it the best way the last time around.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
This is Kavita Pirohit from One Glen Lake Parkway in Atlanta, Georgia, three zero three two eight. And I'm sorry that there was this confusion, but if you want us to come back, we can always do that as well. But, you know, we just wanted, we've been talking to Chris's office, because that's where we were directed to for the last six months, and we just, you know, wanted to find out what the city of Douglasville opinion was on that particular parcel that we wanted to develop. The initial rezoning was considered with a wood springs over there, and I know in particular, Councilwoman Miller and Councilman Adams had certain reservations about it being a not-as-high-quality a hotel as they would have liked it to be. So we went after, it was already rezoned and permitted. We have certain rezoning restrictions, like we have to have a swimming pool, and we have to have a, it's a, I think, a business center and like an exercise room, which is fine, we could still do that with the... With the wood springs? Did I do that?
Yeah.
Okay. So we could still do that with the wood springs, but because of the concern that the council had, we went to Marriott, and we asked them if we could build a town place there. They were very concerned because of the feasibility study, and, you know, we had...
I apologize. I don't know what's going on. We could see technology. If you please check for us to see, thank you.
So...
Okay.
So with a lot of conversations back and forth with the Marriott, they finally did approve the location for a Town Place Suites, but they had their own restrictions on it. Because, you know, I had actually printed out a lot of stuff, and we had a PowerPoint, but then I asked Chris, because we couldn't present anything today in a PowerPoint presentation. But we do have, and, you know, we have paper too, if anybody wants to see it, but the kind of restaurant that they're looking for, or the Marriott clientele looks for, there wasn't anything, you know, close by in a fifteen-minute radius that they were looking for. So one of the restrictions was that we would have, or conditions rather, was that we would have to put in a fine dining restaurant at the same location, not in the building, but in a separate building. So we would end up having to build two buildings. One of them, the Marriott project, is a fifteen-million-dollar project, just the Marriott project, and then the restaurant is another four million, so between nineteen and twenty million dollars is the entire project. We are asking, you know, the city for some help. We would have liked to see any kind of abatement of property taxes, but unfortunately, we are in the TAD district, and because of that, you know, we've been more harmed than, than, you know, had any advantages to it, but, so none of those incentives were available to us. I know we had several conversations. We had conversations with Mayor Pro Tem. We had conversations with, you know, the Councilwoman Miller and Councilman Adams, and some of the things that came up were like, you know, we don't want to set a precedent. Well, some of, before I go there, it was some of the things that were suggested were things like abatement of hotel motel tax. So basically, we collect the hotel motel tax, but we don't actually turn around and pay it, so that would be the incentive that we would receive for the first five years. We had actually asked for the first five years, and then a slow, you know, some more incentives for the, between years six and ten, but then that was, you know, thrown out the window, which was fine, but we just, you know, ultimately said, okay, let's just, you know, settle on the five years. The other thing we had asked for was the impact fees to be waived, and those were coming to about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. That's an upfront expense, but that was also shot down, which is also fine. So now we are down to just one ask, and that's the only ask we have, and that's going to be the determining factor, whether we decide to go with a Marriott over there, or we decide to not do anything and just hold the property and just sit on it for the next five years, because according to Marriott, that exit is five years away from sustaining a Marriott on itself. So given that situation, we have a couple of options. One is, like I said, you know, we either move forward with the Marriott project. For that, we are asking for a hotel motel tax abatement for the first five years, which is what it's going to take us to bring the customer base to the property. The hotel motel tax dollars are allocated only towards tourism, so it's not that the city can take that money and do, build a bridge with it or anything. They only can bring in tourism, which is what we intend to do anyways. We intend to bring people from, you know, outside the city to the city, you know, so that's the whole purpose of the hotel. We don't expect people, you know, within a five-mile radius going to go stay at the hotel. That's not, that's not expected. So we are expecting people from out of, you know, other states when they travel to Atlanta for maybe Six Flags or for any of the conventions downtown, the overflow traffic would come to us, and we would bring them to the city of Douglasville. So that's the plan. That's what we would like to do. So I think the city's dollars would not, you know, be wasted in any way, because we would be doing the same job, except that, you know, we would be obviously attracting the clientele not just to the city, but also, you know, to our location. We will be hiring in addition, in addition to the restaurant and the hotel, we are looking at at least a hundred and twenty employees. So, you know, you're gonna bring in all of that employment to the city. And, you know, like I said, we can, we, the other thing that I would like to point out, because I know this was also one of the concerns that came up, is that we are not asking for anything upfront that you are giving us, like a rezoning, for example, that is going to do any entitlements to the lot unless we first put in the fifteen million dollars to build the hotel. So we're not going to get any incentives unless we spend fifteen million dollars. So the hotel motel tax can only be collected if there is a hotel.
Right.
So it's not like you're writing a check to this or entitling this lot, and then we can take advantage of that entitlement and do something else with it. So it's clearly going to be a fifteen-million-dollar plus the four, so nineteen-million-dollar investment commitment on our part, and we wouldn't receive a dime of it, of the incentive, till we have actually spent the money upfront. So that, I just would like to point that out. So, and then I think another concern that came up was that we would, the city would be setting up a precedent. Now, you know, that's not how things work in terms of precedents, because the first person coming to an undeveloped area and developing it further, I mean, I wouldn't call it like an undeveloped area, but it's not developed to the extent which it needs to be developed, is the person who receives the incentive. The rest of them are going to follow. I mean, just like in Douglas County, we have, you know, Harry Kitchen, who's got the project going, he, you know, the people around that area that are coming there, all the new businesses, new development that is coming there, they're not gonna ask the county for incentives, because they're not gonna need any. They're just, they're going to piggyback on that development. And I know that for sure, it's because I have a lot that I own right across from that development, and I have already received several offers, much higher than what we paid for, because, you know, there's more people that want to come there because of that development. So it's the same theory, you know, if we put in this huge development there with all of this, you know, twenty-million-dollar project, then it's automatically going to bring in, you know, other, other people, and you're not going to have to incentivize them, because, you know, in fact, there will be, there will be more of a reason for them to come there.
Thank you so much, Doctor. You've answered a lot of questions and given us more information and data to consider. I appreciate your presentation. I will open up the floor now. When is your ask? When is the suspense date that you need an answer by?
So this is, this is what I told Chris. It's not that we have any deadline as such. The thing is, we've been already communicating with Chris's group for the last six months.
Okay.
And we have, during that period of time, have had, because when you have a twenty-million-dollar project, you need six to seven million dollars as a down payment in cash. So, you know, obviously, it's not just us. We are a group of people, but we are having to put that money aside towards this project that is not making us any money.
Right.
So the question for us is, either we take this money and put it into another project, or we decide to move forward with this project and use that money.
Yes, ma'am.
But money just sitting, doing nothing is not what we would like to happen, you know, see happen. Plus, you know, obviously Marriott needs answers. I mean, they want to know, because then if they don't put this town place over here, then they are going to put it somewhere else, you know?
Yes, ma'am.
Because they have certain parameters within which they can go. So that's why I told Chris that we need some kind of an answer, so that we can make a decision whether to move forward or not to move forward.
Okay.
If I may, I think what we was communicating with the city manager was that we could look at the November seventeenth date to come back on, as you said earlier, on a full agenda. That's a publicized agenda item for the mayor and council to be able to make a decision on that item.
Okay, that's fair. That gives us more than a month to put it on the agenda and have it go through the process. November seventeenth, so that's what I was gonna ask, 'cause now it's the seventeenth. So it's exactly a month. All right, I'll open the floor up, and I'll just start to my right. Councilman Estes, you have any, you wanna still think, or you have any concerns, questions you want to ask today?
Not concerns or questions. I would like to hear more about it, and so I'm very pleased to have it go back on the agenda. I mean, I think it is something that we need to take a very close look at.
Thank you. Councilman Estes, Dr. Burdanley?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you so much, Mr. Freeze, and thank you so much for being so thorough. I, too, would like to hear more about it. I think there definitely is a need. We know there is a need right now. When we complete this process or begin to actually do it, I'm not sure, but I would definitely like to have it put back on the agenda. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Very good. Mayor Pro Tem, Miller?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, and I appreciate that you've taken the TAD give-back off the table. I think that's appreciated by the council. I also, I like that, I'm impressed by the way you framed your argument in terms of tourism dollars. I think that's, that was very, that's very clever and very, very smart. I don't mean that condescendingly. I mean that, you know, I'm impressed by that, that you can put it in those terms, that Marriott is willing to focus on tourism in Douglasville, and that, you know, the city would be getting something back in exchange for possibly the disruption of the hotel motel tax. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Mayor Pro Tem. And I'll go on the end with Councilman Watts, so that the two councilmembers who's worked this project will be in, will have the last word. Councilmember Watts?
I just, you know, tax abatements, five years. I would, I would be curious, I don't know if this information is even available or could be gathered, what that means bottom line, you know, with a motel like Marriott and occupancy, and what we would be giving up for five years, but also you're bringing in folks that are spending money in the city. And I don't even know if that comparison could be made, but I would be just, I would just be interested in looking at that type of information.
And we have that. We have the economic impact of the project, and then we also have, you obviously have to estimate what that occupancy would be over that period of time, but we've taken kind of an estimated room rate and occupancy rate to just guess kind of what that number looks like over a five-year period. So I'll make sure that you have, have that in your inbox.
Thank you.
Very good. Oh, go ahead, Councilman Adams?
Thank you. Just, the only reason I want to go before Councilwoman Miller, so I don't forget what Chris just said.
Yes, sir.
So Chris, how are you going to provide us with a guess of the different revenue between a Town, a Wood Springs, and a Marriott, if you don't know what the occupancy rate is going to be? That, to me, makes no sense at all.
Well, whenever you do a hotel, you have to run a hotel feasibility study, so every flag requires that feasibility analysis to be done, and so there already has been a feasibility analysis that's done, and those are the occupancy rates that we used. But every flag has to do that for, every hotel developer has to do that for the flag purposes and for lending purposes.
But every flag would have its own set of qualifying items that it would take as far as a particular occupancy rate, in order for it to be feasible from then to come. I appreciate, I appreciate your insistence that we look at this again, but in my own opinion, we've already voted to approve the hotel. I'm very hesitant of setting a precedent. I do not agree with you on the way you have framed the word precedent, because in my opinion, it is a precedent. There's already zoning there for a hotel. It can be built. We have approved it. The only, I think the condition we had was we wanted a swimming pool. So if the council wants to hear that again, that's fine with me. We'll go through the process again, but the precedent that I'm concerned about is that in each and every one that comes in to redevelop the area that we have there at that exit, may want that same treatment, and the hotel motel tax is dedicated already in our community to a certain purpose, which you have mentioned, which I will, I will agree with our Mayor Pro Tem. I thought that's rather clever, the way you framed that. Uh, but, um, I presume then that we will hear it again. But, um, I don't, um, I don't know that the revenues, in my own opinion, I don't know that the revenues that will be given back to this particular applicant are going to matter, because we're not gonna receive either of them for five years. They're gonna be keeping them for five years, whether it's a Wood Springs or a Marriott. I'm not quite so sure that it really matters to us which one of those flags is flown there. Just my opinion. Thank you for presenting.
If I may answer that, um, briefly, um, so if we get a Wood Springs, we're not asking for the abatement, so you would receive that dollars.
Okay.
But the only difference is that the hotel motel tax for the Wood Springs is going to be 40% of what you would collect at the, um, at the Marriott.
Yes, ma'am. And we, we considered that when we looked at the application.
Right. So when, uh, when we actually applied for the rezoning, we had not even brought Marriott to the table.
That's correct.
And we would not, we would have not even actually thought that Marriott would approve us at that location. Um, but, you know, the only difference that the, the council needs to consider is that you've got five years of zero dollars versus, you know, uh, at least 80 years of a, you know, higher product and, and a much more, I mean, 60% more revenue from year six onwards versus you're going to have the same revenue for Wood Springs, you know, for the next 70, 80, however long years that the, the property is there. So it's not going to make any difference, but if you, if you do your study for even just a 20-year period, you're going to come out much better with a Marriott product, even though you lose the first five years, because the remaining 15 years, you're making 60% more every year. So that, that's just, you know...
And it is your contention, doctor, that you would, well, you ba, you basically said it, you would sit on the project for five years anyway.
That's right.
So you, you really don't want to build a Wood Springs.
No.
You want to build a higher quality project, so you would wait for five years until the RevPAR or whatever studies say that that corridor would, uh, warrant for a Marriott flag, and so you would wait to do the Spring Hill rather than the Wood, Wood Springs.
Correct. It would be a Town Place, but yes.
Understood.
We would, we would wait now, because what, what happened was, when we initially came here with the Wood Springs project, we had a team of people that were working on the Wood Springs. After that, when we had to go to Marriott, we had to spend over $100,000, because, you know, you have to show them certain plans and, and go through all the architect and all the engineers, because they had a sound engineer that they wanted to make sure that the interstate is not gonna have so much, you know, um, uh, noise into the rooms, so they wanted us to put, you know, certain things for buffering of the sound.
Right.
So all of those engineers, all of those trades had to be paid. So we spent an extra $100,000 trying to get Marriott on, on the team.
Mm-hmm.
Now, once we have that, the, the Wood Springs people that we had, like partners, they're gone. So now, to go back to Wood Springs again, we would have to spend, you know, another $50,000 to $60,000 minimum to get back on, in that game.
Mm-hmm.
So now, you know, since, I mean, the other thing that has happened in the last six months, like everybody knows, you know, interest rates have gone up crazy.
Right.
So, you know, we, we're dealing with that situation as well on top of that. So by the end of the, the whole thing, it just, this, the whole project will not seem any more feasible, you know? So like I, I talked to, you know, uh, Mayor Pro Tem as well before, that either we do this project now, or we just hold on to it, you know, because it's not gonna hurt us to hold on to it.
Right.
Um, and for five or six years, or however long the city takes to ramp up the, you